This meeting is not called to order, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Here.
Mr. McGurven?
Here.
Ms. Witchy? Mr. Person?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Move if we excuse the absent council member.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Person, that we excuse Councilmember Witchy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, first two items on the agenda are proclamations.
Okay, the first proclamation is for Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Whereas code enforcement officers provide for the safety and welfare of citizens through the enforcement of local codes and/or ordinances dealing with various issues of building, zoning, housing, and environmental safety, and whereas code enforcement officers often have a challenging and demanding role in improving living and working conditions for residents and businesses of local communities, and whereas the role of many code enforcement officers has expanded in recent years with the increased number of foreclosed and abandoned homes and communities impacted economically, and whereas the code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration and ensuring safety through knowledge and application of housing and zoning codes and ordinances, and whereas code enforcement officers are called upon to provide quality customer service to the residents and businesses of the communities in which they serve, and whereas code enforcement officers often have a highly visible role and regularly interact with a variety of state, county, first responder, and legislative boards, commissions, and agencies, and whereas the Washington Association of Code Enforcement, which was established in 1988 to provide ongoing training and support, wants to recognize and honor code enforcement officers all across the state of Washington and bring awareness to the importance of code enforcement. Now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim October 22nd through 26th, 2018, to be Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join in recognizing the dedication and service of individuals who serve as our code enforcement officers. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal in the City of Renton to be affixed this 22nd day of October 2018, and this is signed by Mayor Dennis Law.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the proclamation to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. McGurven, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. We truly do appreciate our code enforcement officers, I can't even begin to tell you what a wonderful job you guys have been doing. To receive the proclamation tonight, I don't see Donna Locker here, or is she hiding? But I know that Rob Chewie and Kevin Lotter are here, you guys want to come up? You bet. You guys are going to have to smile now, she's going to take your picture. Stand up, Megan. Rob, if you guys would like to say anything, you're welcome to, or if you don't want me to put you on the spot, but...
Okay, I'll say something real quick. You know, we couldn't be as good as our jobs without the support that you guys give us. We understand in code enforcement that, you know, without your backing, we're not as, you know, as effective as we can be, and so, we all know every day when we come to work that we've got the full support of the city council, and, you know, we sure appreciate it, and we appreciate this award, thank you.
You bet, thank you. And I have to say, they do miraculous work out there, you guys... The amazing thing is the number of cases that you get compliance, people are, you know, take care of the problems on their own. So anyway, we appreciate all you do, thank you.
Thank you.
Our second proclamation is for Red Ribbon Week 2018. Whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, no use of illegal drugs, and no illegal use of legal drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through 31st, and whereas businesses, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical institutions, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign, and whereas the City of Renton further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign, now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st, 2018, to be Red Ribbon Week 2018 in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in participating in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed, it's this 22nd day of October 2018, and this is signed by Mayor Dennis Law.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the proclamation to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. And here to receive this proclamation is Stephanie Hines. Stephanie, do you want to say a couple words?
The Red Ribbon Campaign is the largest and oldest drug prevention program in the nation, reaching millions of young people during the National Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through 31st. I'm happy, I brought some bracelets for you guys and ribbons to wear during this week. Some things the police department is doing is we're offering a poster contest to Renton Elementary Age Students, 3rd through 5th grade. I'm happy to say that 13 classrooms representing 348 youth are participating this year. So stay tuned, we'll be doing judging online, so I'll be sending that out via email and it'll be on our social media outlets. And we are also doing two Red Ribbon Week recess visits, one to Renton Park Elementary on October 23rd, and then a second one at Cascade Elementary on October 30th. We're partnering with the DEA and Crime Stoppers, we're also bringing McGurven, the crime prevention dog, with us, so at recess, students will be able to interact with law enforcement, try and gear, just have that positive experience with them, and we'll hand out stickers to them. So, thank you.
That's great, Stephanie, thank you, great cause, appreciate it. You bet. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing, Jan Han.
Thank you, Mayor Law, members of the council. The city is required to hold public hearings before the adoption of the biennial budget and the setting of the property tax levy for the upcoming year. The first public hearing was held back of May 21st of this year, and tonight represents the second public hearing. A third and final public hearing will be held on November 5th. After all of our public hearings have been appropriately noticed, and they provide an opportunity for public input, just a quick few highlights, the proposed 2019-2020 budget includes citywide revenues of $515 million and expenditures of $525 million for the biennium. This general fund, which is the city's primary operating fund, has revenues of $212 million and expenditures of $217 million. The city's property tax levy makes up approximately 20% of the general fund's revenues, and of the general fund expenditures, approximately 40% are for public safety, with overall expenditures being approximately 62% for personnel-related costs. Additional detail regarding the budget can be found on the city's website, and with that, I'll turn it back over to you for public comment.
That's great, thank you, Jan. Any questions from council? Okay, this is a public hearing, did we have any correspondence?
We did not.
Okay, was there anybody that wanted to testify for the public hearing? Okay, what's the wish?
Move the public hearing be closed.
For the public hearing?
Oh, we have somebody.
I've never done this before, so I don't know, it doesn't have anything to do with that.
No, if you want to testify on the budget?
Right, that's what I thought.
Yeah, no, I, we'll get you in the audience comment in just a few minutes. So, what's the wish to the council?
Move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Pavoni, that we close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. Thank you, Jan, thank you, Jamie. Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, city council, I have one item this evening. The American Public Works Association, Washington Chapter, held its annual heavy equipment operators competition, known as a Rodeo, on October 4th in Wenatchee. The competition requires operators to demonstrate their heavy equipment skills navigating obstacle courses. Renton Public Works Maintenance Workers proved to be among the best, placing in the top four finishers. The staff members will compete in the National APWA Rodeo Competition, which will be held in Seattle next fall. Congratulations go to Russ McClurg, who placed first in the snowplow truck obstacle course and fourth in the backhoe competition, and Kip Branton, who brought home second place in the loader obstacle course and also in the skid steer course. That's it this evening, thank you.
Great, thank you, Bob, they are really talented individuals, so it sounds like it's just fun and games, but it's really amazing what they're able to do. Okay, now we're moving on to audience comments, and we have one person signed up to address the council. If you'd like to come up to the podium, give your name for the record and city of residence, and you have five minutes. Leslie, is it Morgan?
Yes, Leslie Morgan, and Renton Roads crews are amazing, anyway, I can testify to that. I'm here today, I live in unincorporated King County in Renton, and I'm here just to talk to the council in the City of Renton about Cedar Hills Landfill and their new comp plan, which they have chosen the alternative to continue landfilling until 2040, and I'm just here to, having been a resident that has been impacted greatly by this landfill, I just am here tonight to sort of educate the City of Renton to exactly what that's going to mean for us. First and foremost, I will say, there's a few things I want to make sure I don't forget, one of those being that if they do, as the plan is written, go to a height of 2,000, or 840, that does go against a settlement that they, that the King County Council agreed in the late 90s, which was, they had a good faith effort of staying at 788. So they are breaking a settlement and a promise that they've made to our community. Second of all, I was just researching and seeing that, and this may be very important to you, as a city that gets your water from wells, is that the aquifer, which is a very large aquifer underneath Cedar Hills Landfill, even their own experts say that will be contaminated at the best-case scenario, 2058. So to continue to want to build this mound of garbage when almost, there's only two regional or two landfills even left in western Washington, because they know that it's environmentally and geographically incorrect to have a landfill where there's so much water, because water is the biggest enemy to a landfill. They've also chosen to, in Area 5 and 6, put interim cover, all the research says you never do interim cover in an area that gets this kind of water, so nowhere do they recommend that they do interim cover versus a complete seal to those areas. Now they're wanting to continue to expand a landfill, and there were two other alternatives, and I've really researched it because I live close to the landfill, so I'm very vested in making the best decision possible. One of them was railing the garbage, which, you know, sounds like a great alternative, and it's not that I wouldn't be for that, but I still feel like looking into the other alternative, which was a waste of energy, and I may have to have that next door to me, but I believe that it's clean, it's effective, and it even has the potential that where they can actually mine Cedar Hills and eliminate the landfill entirely over time, which I think environmentally is just such a positive thing, they've done that in Germany, they've done that in Sweden, and they do have a real large incinerator in Florida and Tampa, and it's proven to be very successful. So I'm asking the City of Renton to say no to the alternative, and what I'm asking, or what our community is asking, is that they do independent studies outside of solid waste, because their numbers are wrong, they're very outcome-based, that an independent group and someone that actually is experts in either waste export or doing the waste to energy, that they do studies that are accurate studies from experts in those fields to give us a proper amount that it really is going to cost. So I'm just hoping the cities will start fully understanding how horrible Cedar Hills Landfill is, and Reagan Dunn just had a town hall meeting, and there were over 200 people there, just, and just the other night even, last night, as a matter of fact, I ended up having to turn my furnace off because of all the noxious gas that was coming into my home. So landfilling is not what anyone now is doing, they're all turning away from landfilling and looking at better, more environmentally friendly areas, or areas to go to, so I'm just hoping the City of Renton, which I know uses it, well, I'm just going to encourage you to get more educated about the other alternatives and do what's right for the environment, for our water, and for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to consent agenda, there are five items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member liked polled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Seeing none, I move that we concur with the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Person, and the council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, the Committee of the Whole has a committee report.
The Committee of the Whole Committee Report is regarding Safe and Healthy Housing Rental Registration, docket number 118. The Committee of the Whole concurs with the Staff and Planning Commission recommendation to adopt code changes to implement a rental registration program to ensure rental housing units meet basic health standards. The committee further recommends that an ordinance be prepared and presented for first reading when it is complete, and this is signed by Council President Prince.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that council concur with the Committee of the Whole Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. McGurven, that council concur with the Committee of the Whole Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, let's see, Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Mr. McGurven?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Because you went a whole week with no work, so now you're catching up.
Okay, the first Finance Committee Report is regarding approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Accounts payable, total payment of $6,607,641.99 for vouchers 101518, 368996 through 368998, 369012 through 369439, payroll benefit withholding vouchers 5905 through 5914, 368999 through 369011, and one wire transfer. Payroll, total payment of $1,456,821.41 for payroll vouchers, which includes 679 direct deposits and 12 checks, September 16th through 30th, 2018 pay period. And Kidder Matthews, total payment of $38,116.44 for vouchers 5734 through 5751, and this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
That's a lot of money, but I just want a couple things that stuck out in the vouchers of 166 pages, again, it seems like they always seem to be 166 pages. But you know, our US Bank credit card was $195,475.15 last month. We had the recycle event on September 15th, and some of the expenses that we had, we paid $400 to recycle 65 mattresses, whole bunch of cardboard, we went through, we recycled 180 pounds of alkaline batteries, and 385 tires, and I think this is an interesting one, that it cost us $607 to have a police car bio-cleaned, and what, and the reason for this, and the commander in the back can correct me if I'm wrong, but with the advent of the drugs that are out there today, they get in the cars, the smell, and they can affect the officers, so they have to be cleaned, and we've actually had a couple incidences where officers have become overcome from the residue of that, and it's, to me, that's more scary than being shot at. I mean, you know, you can see maybe if you're getting shot at, but that stuff you can't, so I'm very happy, I'm not happy that we have to spend $607, but I'm very happy that we're doing it to keep our officers safe. And with that, I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, the second Finance Committee Report is regarding Renton Municipal Code Changes for Chapters 5-5, 5-12, and 5-25. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the code amendments to Renton Municipal Code Sections 5-5, 5-12, and 5-25 to clear up language regarding requirements and allowing exemptions. Code amendments to take effect, January 1st, 2019. The committee further recommends that the three ordinances effectuating the code amendments be presented for first reading. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, the next Finance Committee Report is regarding approval of contract extension for liability third-party administration. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the three-year contract extension with Carl Warren and Company for liability third-party administration services with a total annual cost not to exceed $50,000 without prior city approval, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement, and this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
And the final Finance Committee Report is regarding Amendment Number 7 to the Freshbox Implementation Agreement. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the Amendment Number 7 to CAG 16129, with the City of Seattle Office of Sustainability and Environment to accept additional FINI grant funding for 2018, net increase of $7,475 for a total of $43,881.77 to date, to fund an incentive program for shoppers using their Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program benefits, and this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur with the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
That is it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you for doing all that work.
We're not going to work for the next couple weeks.
No, I know, so it's good that you...
We're going to take Monday off.
Good that you put all that time in. Moving on to legislation, we have three ordinances for first reading and three for second and final reading.
Okay, the first ordinance for first reading is an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, repealing subsection 5-25-10.C of the Renton Municipal Code, eliminating the business and occupation tax exemption for certain commercial airline parts, amending section 5-25-12 of the Renton Municipal Code by revising new business tax credit regulations and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, the next ordinance for first reading is an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Sections 5-12-4, 5-12-6, 5-12-9, 5-12-10, and 5-12-11 of the Renton Municipal Code, amending adult entertainment business license regulations and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, the final ordinance for first reading is an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Chapter 5-5 of the Renton Municipal Code, regulating to business licenses and regulations, relating to business licenses and regulations, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the ordinance be...
Placed on...
Placed on the agenda for next meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, the first ordinance for second and final reading is an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 4-5-070.C, 4-5-070.C.10, 4-5-070.C.16, 4-5-070.C.27, 4-5-070.C.33, 4-5-070.C.49, and 4-5-070.C.54 of the Renton Municipal Code, amending the city's amendments to the 2015, 2015 edition of the International Fire Code, adding definitions, adding a new subsection, 4-5-070.C.78, regulating commercial cooking hood suppression system contractors, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McGurven, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Eyes have it, thank you.
Okay, the second ordinance for second and final reading is an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 8-2-2.G, 8-2-3.E, and 8-4-24.A, and subsections 8-4-3.1 and 8-5-15 of the Renton Municipal Code, establishing piped utility rates for 2019 and 2020, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McGurven, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and it requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Okay, and the final ordinance for second and final reading is an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 8-1-10 of the Renton Municipal Code, establishing the 2019 and 2020 solid waste collection services rates for all customer classes, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. McGurven, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be adopted as read, requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
Ayes have it. Thank you, Megan. Moving on to new business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Next Monday, we have no meetings. It's a 5th Monday, so starting on Monday, November 5th, Committee of the Whole meets 5:30. We have an executive session for 30 minutes on potential litigation in the council conference room. Then at 6 o'clock, we will meet, we have two items on the agenda, the issuance of park improvement bonds in council chambers, and the 2019 legislative priorities also in council chambers. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see, Mr. Corman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to announce a Transportation Committee meeting for Monday, November 5th at 4:30 PM in the council conference room. Three items on that agenda. The first is a rack appointment, woo. The second is Rainier Flight Lease Proposal Briefing, and the third item is emerging issues in transportation, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to announce a Public Safety Committee meeting on November 5th. It'll be at 4:00 PM in the council conference room. There's two items on the agenda, false alarm ordinance and emerging issues in public safety. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to announce that the Community Service Committee will meet in the council conference room on Monday, November 5th at 5 o'clock. There are two items on the agenda. First, Renton Senior Citizens Advisory Board Ordinance. Second, emerging issues in community services. That will be it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McGurven?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have two meetings to announce. First, for Chair Witschey, on Thursday, October 25th at 3:30 PM in the council conference room, the Utilities Committee will meet with two items on the agenda, Rainier Avenue and Benson-Culvert Replacement Grant Agreement, and second, emerging issues utilities. Then right after, at 4:00 PM, the Planning and Development Committee will meet, also in the council conference room. Four items on the agenda. First is Docket 13, Groups C and D. Second is Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Third is Shoreline Master Program Amendments, and finally, emerging issues in CED, and that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Finance Committee will meet Monday, November 5th in the council conference room at 3:30 PM. Two items, vouchers and emerging issues. And I'd also like to publicly thank Mr. Prince for putting the bond issue on the public, on the Committee of the Whole and in the conference room, because I think we all need to be educated, and the public as well, of what it takes to do one of those, so I thought it was a great suggestion. I wish I would have thought of it myself. And then verify that the Bond Council will be here as normal. We normally have the Bond Council at those things, so that if there are any questions.
Okay.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. What's the wish to the council?